In tonight's study session, we have one item on the agenda, which is our discussion regarding the School Resource Officer Program. I believe we have a presentation. Captain Hawkins, is that you that's starting us off?
Yes, Mayor, it is. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Appreciate you allowing us to come and give a short presentation on the SRO program. I'm gonna try and share my screen here, see if it works. I've got about 20 slides and then can answer any questions that we that you might have after that. So let me see here. So there's that. And share screen. Is that up there? Or is it on the wrong screen?
It's there.
Okay. Try this again.
No. It's good.
But is there? It's good?
It's there.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so the, in 2014, in April 2014, Norman residents voted to make a, make the 2008 half-cent sales tax permanent. The dedicated sales tax was referred to PSST-2. And one of the six things that it detailed was number three, the addition of 13 officers for the creation of the SRO program. A little bit about the framework of the School Resource Officer Program. The School Resource Officer Program was created here in Norman. Norman Police Department's and Norman Public Schools School Resource Officer Program was created in July of 2015 and actually started into the schools in the 2016-2017 school year. The School Resource Officer Section will consist of one supervisor and 12 officers. And at full implementation, there will be four officers assigned to the high schools, two officers at each high school, one officer at each of the middle schools, and then four officers assigned to the 17 elementary schools. Currently, we have all of that with the exception of the four officers at the elementary school level. We talk a lot about NASRO. NASRO is the National Association of School Resource Officers. It's, all of our SROs are NASRO certified. NASRO is the world's leader in school-based policing. It's a nonprofit organization that was founded in 1991 and with a solid commitment for, to our nation's youth. It's an organization for school-based law enforcement officers, school administrators, and school security safety personnel, so that they can all work in partnership to protect students, school facility, staff, and the schools that they attend. It was NASRO that founded the Triad, and I'll talk a little bit more about the Triad here in a minute. But they founded the Triad concept of the school-based policing, which is the true and tested strength of the School Resource Officer Program, specifically the one that we have here in Norman. And like it says, the SRO program that we have is NASRO-based. So here's the mission statement for the School Resource Officer Program. The Norman Police Department School Resource Officers are dedicated to ensure a safe learning environment while providing valuable resources to students, faculty, staff, and parents. SROs will also strive to develop permanent solutions to problems within the school district while actively mentoring students in an effort to create future leaders within the community. Mentorship, you'll see, is a big theme for the SRO program, and it's also a big part of the school triad, which is right here. So the school triad, the SRO triad that NASRO introduced is the triangle that you see in the middle, teacher, officer, counselor. And the mentoring is the overarching theme through all of it. And somebody have a question? There's something.
That's Brent, that's Ellen. She's just, she's just not even
Okay, all right. Um, so the SRO program is mentoring through the SRO triad, which, like I said, is the teacher, officer, counselor. Here's a couple of pictures. Our SROs are, Norman's SROs are involved in a lot of the programs that we have, not only throughout the school year, but also in the summer. Many of you are probably familiar with Operation School Bell, which is a organization that provides children that can't afford school supplies, clothing, shoes, hygiene packets, all of that. It's, it's almost like walking into a Walmart, except it's, it's like a, in a business center. And so throughout the year, teachers and counselors bring students to the facility to where they can get these items, and the officers actually, the SROs actually go with them and help them shop for the items. And so that's, it's a great thing for the kids and the great thing for SROs to be involved in. The picture on the right is our Police Athletics League that we have run for three summers in a row until this past summer. And so our SROs are highly involved in that. That is an, that is a program where we really tried to bridge the gap between the youth in our community and law enforcement officers. I'm gonna go through some of the SRO objectives that we, that we have listed, and then I'm gonna go through some of the language in the MOU that we have with Norman Public Schools. But for the objectives, the SRO's objectives is to be visible, active law enforcement figure on campus, who is an immediate first responder in dealing with any law-related issues. So this will mention this again in the, in the MOU. Just because something may be a law enforcement issue does not necessarily mean that law enforcement action is taken. It's specifically written in our, in our MOU with Norman Public Schools, that just because it may be a violation of law does not necessarily mean the administration of the school does not take care of that situation. And I'll, I'll mention that again here in a minute. To act as a classroom resource for instruction in the following areas: law-related education, violence diffusion, safety programs, alcohol and drug prevention, crime prevention, and any other areas. One of the programs that we have is a program called TEAM, which stands for Teaching, Educating, and Mentoring. And if any of you remember the old DARE program, it's, it's very similar to the DARE program, except where DARE specifically dealt with drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. TEAM deals with anything from firearm safety to bullying to any, any level or any, any school activities that that need to be addressed. It is structured from a elementary school to middle school to high school level. So if an SRO is asked to teach a class on a specific subject that we have in TEAM, they go get the specific folder from that school age bracket and then go and teach that class. It's very structured. To serve as a member of the faculty and administrative team working hand-in-hand to create permanent solutions to problems and maintain a safe learning environment. Our SROs work really well with all of the administrators and all of the sites that they, that they work with at AT to find the best solutions for any incidents that may happen. To perform as a resource for the students, enabling them to associate with a positive law enforcement figure in the student's environment. Again, that's a big thing for us in law enforcement. We have gone through an age where, I know personally, when I was, when I was early in my career on the street, you walk into Walmart and you're in uniform to take a report or something, and somebody is pushing a child in a buggy, and they say, "You better watch out, or that officer's gonna take you to jail." Well, that really sets us up kind of as the boogeyman. And so really what we're trying to do now is really bridge that gap back to let, let the students know that, that we're here for a resource, as a resource for them as well. So we're really trying to do that. To be a resource to teachers, parents, and students for any law-related concerns and questions. To serve as a counseling resource in, in areas that may affect the educational environment, which may or may not be law-related. Here's the big thing. SROs shall not use criminal law enforcement authority for the purpose of enforcing school rules or for facilitating school disciplinary actions. When we entered into the SRO program in the 2016-2017 school year, it was, it was made very clear between both Norman Public Schools and the Norman Police Department. Our officers are not there to enforce school rules, no running in the hallways, make sure you have a hall pass, any of that. Those administrative duties still lie with the administrators and the teachers of those schools. So we are not there to impose school rules or school disciplinary measures in any way. So here's the, here's some language out of the MOU that I mentioned earlier. "In the event that a student misbehaves, the school principal and their designees will be the primary source of intervention and disciplinary consequences. SROs are responsible for criminal law issues, not school disciplinary issues." And again, just because it may be a criminal law violation does not necessarily mean that the law, that, that an SRO is going to step in and take law enforcement action. A lot of times, many times, it is still handled on a school disciplinary level. Many types of minor misbehaviors may be, may technically meet the statutory requirements for nonviolent misdemeanors, such as theft, vandalism, disorderly conduct, loitering, incidents relating to alcohol, threats, or harassment, but may be handled outside of the criminal justice system. That just kind of goes along with what I was just saying. These are all, these all could be criminal violations, but they are generally, are, they are, are handled on an administrative level within the school. "Absent a real and immediate threat to students, teachers, or public safety, incidents involving public order offenses, such as those listed on the previous slide, and including disturbance, disruption of school or public assembly, trespass, loitering, profanity, and fighting that does not include or involve physical injury or weapon, may be considered school discipline issues to be handled by school officials." And as I have said, they generally are handled as a disciplinary measure within the administration of the schools. Some new programs that we brought into the Norman Public Schools this last school year that are still in this school year, Handle With Care. This was brought to us from Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City started this program, and we kind of piggybacked off of it. Handle With Care is a program where if a first responder, whether that's a firefighter, whether that's a law enforcement officer, comes in contact with a Norman Public School student in a traumatic incident. For instance, if they were at a student's house and the grandmother lived with the family and grandmother passes away, that's a traumatic incident. And so the officer gets discreetly the student's name and emails that into a Handle With Care email address that only goes to a select couple of people within Norman Public Schools, so that they know, not necessarily what happened, but they know that a traumatic event has happened in that student's life. One of the examples that we give is if a student's house was broken into in the middle of the night, and that student now has a hard time sleeping at night within their own home, and they're now falling asleep at school, a Handle With Care notification that, hey, something has happened in this, in this child's life may help explain the, the behavior that is now being seen at school. So it's not for any of the counselors or the teachers at that child's school to run up and contact them and say, "Hey, what happened? I'm sorry," or inquire about it. It's just to have them understand that something traumatic may have happened in that child's life, or did happen in that child's life, and, and any behavior that is out of characteristic for that child can be, it can be, could be explained by that. Crime Stoppers is another one. So we were having a hard time really getting good information on different things, that, different threats or any, anything going on in a school that was phoned in through the Fusion Center. And so Crime Stoppers came to us and said, "Hey, we're working, we're working on getting that stuff real time." And not only that, but we have an app that we can put on all of Norman Public Schools' computers that they give to students, that the students can then jump onto that Crime Stoppers app and report anything from a fellow student that is threatening to harm themselves, to a threat at the school, or anything like that. That goes straight to Crime Stoppers from there. It is anonymous, and then comes straight back down to both administration at the Norman Public Schools, as well as to the Norman Police Department, so that we can handle whatever situation that comes through. Mentoring opportunities. We have lots of mentoring opportunities. I could sit here and talk to you for hours about all of the great things that our SROs have done. Anything from getting, getting haircuts for kids, buying shoes for kids, kids showing up in the wintertime without jackets, going to buy jackets for, for students, and generally, everything comes out of the SRO's pocket. That is not something that they're reimbursed for. It's not something that they're asked to do. That's just a testament to the type of SROs that we have within our schools. They care about the students. They care about the well-being of the students. We had a student at one point in time that was misbehaving in class, very uncharacteristic of the child to be misbehaving in class in a middle school. So a child ends up getting sent to the office, to the office by the, the teacher, because they were misbehaving. The SRO went and sat down, had a conversation with the student, found out that the student was having severe toothache. The SRO made some phone calls, got the student into a dentist that afternoon, and found out that the student had a abscess tooth, and they were able to get the medication that that, that the child needed and the care that that child needed pretty quickly. And if it hadn't have been for the relationship with the SRO that that student had, that may not have happened. So again, some of the, some of the stories that I can sit here and talk about, but this one specifically, Sergeant Kent Mosley was recognized by a Norman North High School student during their annual senior salutes for his commitment and support to the students throughout the year. If any of the, for those of you that don't know what the senior salute is, so at Norman North, they get up in front of their class, they, they write something out, and then they get up in front of the class and read it on somebody that they want to salute that has changed their life for the better. And here is what the student wrote. I will just give you guys a few minutes to read that. Okay. Like I said, I could go on and on about stories similar to this. Many of you saw the News 9 article that, or the report that was done on Sergeant, then Sergeant Savage, now Lieutenant Savage, for paying to fix a grandmother's car. Grandmother had a, was raising granddaughter, couldn't afford to get her car fixed, and that was her only means to work and her only means of getting her child, the grandchild, to school. Lieutenant Savage stepped in, paid for the vehicle to be fixed, so that the grandmother could get to work and the student could get to school. And again, I could go on for hours about that. So moving on, some of the after, after-hours security details that our SROs do. Football games, softball games, volleyball, basketball, baseball, graduations, dances, parades, and others. If you guys know teachers, you guys know that a teacher's day does not start at eight o'clock in the morning and end at four o'clock in the afternoon when school gets out. SROs are kind of the same way. There are, there are sometimes before-school events, sometimes, and a lot of times after-school events, and sometimes weekend events that they cover as well. The School Resource Officers, along with other specially-trained Norman Police Officers, provide security coverage at over 300 Norman Public Schools-sponsored events annually. Here is a picture of our current School Resource Officer Program. The only difference with the officers that you see here is Sergeant Kent Mosley retired, and Sergeant Katie Perry has taken his place. Otherwise, the only, the only change, so those are the SROs. And as you can see, we have two at Norman High, two at Norman North, one at each middle school, a lieutenant that, that supervises all of them, and then we're still waiting for the four from the elementary, for the elementary schools. With that, I will stop sharing my screen and be happy to answer any questions.
Ellen, I'll turn it over to you to call on people.
So far, none. Councilmember Bearman.
You're muted.
Am I now?
Sorry. That was my, that was my fault. I can hear myself in my own microphone, and so it sounds in my ear like I am not muted. So I appreciate the presentation. I really, I really appreciated being able to see everything kind of from A to Z in a more linear fashion. Can we talk about some of the data? I don't know if that's, if that's you, Sean, or if there's someone else who kind of has their hands on some of the data about SRO incidences since the inception of the program. I don't really have much in the way of questions about the, the different programming that SROs run, but I am, I am interested in seeing how detailed the data is that Norman Public Schools and NPD keeps, and if we could dive into some of that. So I don't know if I jumped the gun a little bit, but that's where, that's where I'm hoping to head.
I can certainly answer any questions that you have on that. We do keep data. The MOU between Norman Public Schools and the Norman Police Department requires us to keep data. There are certain data points that are in, in the MOU that we keep, and then we even keep above and beyond that. When the, when the SRO program first started, it's, the first year that it was in the schools was under, under Chief Humphrey, and so he had us keep above and beyond the, the data that the MOU requires, which includes now demographics.
Okay. I, I mean, I don't have it in front of me, because frankly, I assumed that that was gonna be some of what we were going over tonight. So I mean, I guess that was, that was incorrect to some on my end, but that is an important component of this program and something that has been the subject of a lot of public discourse over the last few weeks. And so I assumed that we were going to be talking about it and would have some of it publicly viewable for the audience watching at home, because I know they want to see kind of all of this as well. So I don't really know where to go from here, because that's where a lot of my questions lied before we moved on to the funding aspect.
I have the data on my screen that I can share, but will need the chief's permission before I do that.
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead.
No names on that?
No, no names.
Perfect.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
See if I can share my screen again. I did it once. I'm not promising I can do it again, but I'm gonna give it a shot here. Is that up? No, hold on. There you go. How's that?
There we go. Got it. You might need to zoom in every now and then to make sure that where you're, where you're talking about, so we can, we can see it.
Now, councilmember, you're asking a lot of me here. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna give it a shot.
It's so small.
Let's see here.
Now, if you go to the view tab of
Yeah, that's where I'm, that's where I'm going. Here we go.
All right. There we go.
Let's try.
There we go.
Is that a little better?
You really, y'all really didn't want me to get that close to the screen in order to have to read all
Okay, and I can, I can kind of move this back and forth as needed, but that is the crux of it, right? Well, I'll just leave it right there. You guys can tell me where I need to move it from there.
Can you give us some kind of an overview of what the, the types of issues would be included, so included in state charges, dockets, protective custody, that kind of thing? Oh, there we go. Now I can see it better.
I don't know if, want me to move it all the way over here? Like? And then it bounced back. Um. So as you can see, we had zero arrests during this last school year. When we talk about arrests, we talk about actual physical arrests, putting a child in handcuffs and taking them off of campus. If, if something rises to a criminal level that law enforcement has to take action on, then we, we usually do a paper report and submit charges through either district court or through municipal court, depending on the difference, the offenses. State charges are generally gonna be your most serio, you're more serious if there was a assault with a deadly weapon on campus. Those, those would go under state charges. Also, we investigate every, and just because state charges are filed, I will, I will preface this, and I see Kristi on here, and she can address this, just because state charges are filed does not necessarily mean that they get filed on a district level. For instance, we investigate fully any threat that is made to a campus. So sometimes we get a student that thinks they're calling in a prank to avoid, you know, having to do a test or something like that, and they call in a bomb threat for a school campus. We investigate those fully, and when, when we can identify it back to a student, we do file paperwork with the state on that. It does not always get filed with the state, but we do file with the, with the district attorney on those, because we consider that a very serious matter. Dockets, maybe anything from possession of tobacco. You know, it could be a minor assault. And there's a difference here between, you'll see, between the police dockets and the citizen dockets. Police dockets are the ones that are actually written by a police officer on a student. And again, like I said, that could be for tobacco, a minor assault, anything like that. The dockets that are written by citizen could be anything from a parent coming in and saying, "That student assaulted my, my son or daughter, and I want to sign a citation against them." They have the opportunity to write a docket against the others, the other student. It can also be truancy-related. And if a student so, under protective custody. So I will tell you that the, the biggest thing for me on statistics, we have kept statistics from day one of our School Resource Officer Program. We keep them not, not necessarily just to, just to look at and go, "Okay, we've had a great year." We study our statistics, because we, we want to learn from our statistics and know if we can do any better or improve anything from our statistics. Protective custodies, the very first year that we were in the schools, the 16-17 school year, we realized that there, there is some, there is some mental health issues in students as well as adults. And so the summer after the 16-17 school year, all of our SROs became CIT And so the summer after the 16, 17 school year, all of our SROs became CIT certified, so that they could help deal with those, those, those mental health issues. And so those protective custodies, all of those 70 protective custodies are students that were taken for, they either, they either threatened to harm themselves or harm somebody else, and were taken for evaluation. And then interviews and searches. So again, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any specific questions. But these are the, these are the dat, this is the data from last year's school year. I will tell you that we run this not only on a year-to-year basis, but we run this on a monthly basis. So as the, as month-to-month goes by in the school system, the Chief Operating Officer, Justin Milner, and I meet on a monthly basis, go over these numbers, talk about anything that needs to be improved, anything that jumps out at us, anything like that, and we, when we talk about those numbers. So these are looked at throughout the year, as well as at the end of the year.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. We just maybe talk a little bit just about the history of the program. What was the school security relationship before the SRO program? Just for those that aren't real familiar with, you know, Norman Public Schools did have armed security in schools before this program. Would you, let me talk about the history of this?
Absolutely. They actually, Norman Public Schools actually had their own police department. So it wasn't just armed security. They were clean certified police officers, just like any Norman officer. They, they did not have, and I, I'm not sure how many years that had gone on prior to us getting involved. Justin Milner might be able to answer that question, but it, it came a lot, it went along for several years, and then some of our officers would even go over and work part-time as school resource officers in the high school. And so at one point in time, just for continuity, the School Resource Officer Program was, was pitched from the Norman Public Schools and Norman Police Department side, and that's what brought us to where we're at today. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I, many people know I went to Kennedy and Irving and Norman High, and I don't really recall there being any armed security at Kennedy when I was there in the early mid 90s. But I do remember at Irving that it was sometimes a Norman police officer or an OU police officer, or even sometimes a county deputy. Sometimes, I think one of them was even a Purcell police officer. I think he was a deputy that maybe became a Purcell officer. I can't remember. But I do always remember it from at least sixth grade on. And I do recall that kind of the pitch from Chief Humphrey about why this would be a good idea was getting, you know, better trained officers in this, in there, and trying to build a, the goal would be to try to build better relationships with kids, coming through between kids and police officers, if that's what I understood.
Yes, sir. And I, and I would add to that, that when we, when we went to Norman Public, Norman Public, Norman Police Department officers. So before, you had the Norman Public Schools officers that worked, and then secondary employment hired out officers from, like you said, Cleveland County, Norman, any, anywhere that they could get those. Some of the times on those, you know, you're getting an officer that doesn't really care about working around children. They're just looking to get the extra money from the secondary employment. With the Norman Public Schools and Norman Police Department's SRO program now, you have SROs in every school that care about the kids. They're not there just to get the paycheck. They're not there just to get the overtime. They're really committed to the program, and the, and they're, and they're, they're doing a great job.
And do our current SROs, how often do they work a street shift? And do they ever come off of working a street shift and go into the school? Or do they come off of a full school day and go onto the street?
So, no. So, so as you know, as you all, as the council knows, this has been a little bit of a different year. And so normally, through the, through the school year, the SROs stay in the schools the entire time. At the end of the school year, we urge the SROs to take vacation time, stuff like that, because right, right into rolling in from June to July is summer school, which we usually have a couple of SROs involved in summer school, one at the elementary level and one at the high school level. And then we also have programs in June like Safety Town that SROs cover. PAL usually runs the entire month of July, which is overall SROs. And so we have programs in the summer that keep them busy. Now, since COVID hit, they did go back to the street until the beginning of, we didn't have any programs this summer. So they did go back to the street for the, for the summer, and until the schools started back again in person. But, but generally, no, their assignment is SRO. They don't go work the street and then come work at the school. That's their, that's their overall assignment.
Okay. And I did notice that protective custody category seems to be the highest one by a lot. Is that, are those initiated contacts from officers that notice something that's going on? Or they've heard about it? They've been contacted?
Generally, those, those start with a administrator or a counselor. You know, a student has gone and confided in a, in a teacher or a counselor and make some kind of statement that they would, you know, are going, are a threat to themselves or others. And then an SRO is brought in from that point. There have been points where I'm sure that an SRO has overheard something, but generally, it's, it's driven from administrative first. And, you know, just, you know, just like the adult population, one out of every four adults has some type of mental health disorder, and that trickles down to our, our children as well. So it could be, it could be anything from depression and anxiety or, or on up. But they're part of that cat, children are part of that category too. We underestimated that the first year and addressed it from that point forward.
Okay. And then, is it tracked how often have our SROs had to use force? How often they've had to pull their weapon, pull their gun to, in order to get compliance, if they've had to use mace or tasers? Do we track that kind of stuff too?
Yeah, I, I do not have those statistics, but those, we, we could get those numbers if that's something that the council would like. Anytime that we have any type of use of force like that, a blue team has to be done in order to account for that. And so we would have to get, we would get with our Internal Affairs Department and basically just run, I, I think, I could be talking out of turn here, because I'm not an IA and don't have all of those answers. But I think we could run those, the addresses by school, just the school addresses, to see if we could identify those numbers. It's not, it's not going to be a high number by any means. You know, in the, in the, going, in the four years that I have, have been the commander over the SROs, I can only think of two or three, right off the top of my head.
And is there a, a way for, if there was a complaint that a student had about an SRO or a parent, is there an avenue for them to go about that? Is it through the school? Is it through the city of Norman?
I would say the best result would be both. You know, that way, that way it gets brought in from both sides. Because if it, if it's, if it's happening, like I said, with an administrator or, or, or the SRO is there with an administrator, it can be, it can be brought up from both ends. But yes, we, we encourage anybody that has a complaint about any of our School Resource Officers to call in, and it will be thoroughly investigated. I can tell you, to date, there has been, in the four years that we have been in the schools, we have not had any, any formal complaints that have been filed against an SRO.
And then there is one, you know, kind of a real sensitive issue, but it was a story that we had heard during the budget meeting, and it seemed like a very difficult and delicate situation to try to handle. And I wasn't sure how to even go, how the department or MPS would go about it. But having a student whose parent, you know, was killed by one of our officers, justified or not, irrelevant, I think. What I'm getting at is that the student does have to see this officer on a daily basis at school, and I could definitely see how that would be a very difficult thing for that student.
Absolutely.
And, and even the officer potentially as well. So that story really struck me as being something that would be very difficult to deal with, and I wasn't sure exactly how that would be dealt with.
So that was not, that, nobody knew that that was occurring. Nobody had ever connected the dots to let either Norman Public Schools or the Norman Police Department know about that situation. So it was the first time that, that both organizations heard about that. And then this summer, Justin Milner and I met and, and took care of that situation to where that is not going to be a problem anymore.
Okay. I appreciate that. That's, like I said, something I've really just been thinking about a lot, because I did go to Norman High, and I do know the.
Absolutely.
And that just seemed like a really tough and not a very common thing to deal with, so I appreciate.
Absolutely. And we would have addressed it earlier had we, had we known. So that, like I said, that was the first time that it was brought to our attention, and, and it was dealt with.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then truancy are, how involved are the SROs in truancy? If someone's late or doesn't show?
Not, not very. That's going to be under the dockets citizen. That would be school administrators that are signing the dockets for truancy against students. Very rarely is an SRO involved in that.
That's all the questions I have right now for Captain Hawkins anyway. I have some budgetary questions maybe later, but I appreciate your answers, Captain.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Peacock.
Thank you. Yeah, my questions center a lot around data as well, so thank you for being willing to talk about that. Is there any data that shows instances where a student might have been, you know, might have only received discipline from the school administration, but when a criminal offense might also have been justified?
That would have to be something that Justin Milner would answer. We don't, if, if, if the, if the police department doesn't have to, doesn't take a report, or, and if it's, it's handled in a administrative manner, we do not document that in any way. The police department does not.
Justin, could you possibly speak to if MPS records any data like that?
We record student discipline data. I'm not sure as far as noting criminal act. Or if I understood you to say, you know, if it were to roll into criminal act, ours is focused mostly on administrative discipline in the schools.
Okay. There was a slide that talked to, you know, certain offenses that might, you know, normally rise to the level of a criminal offense, but were, you know, handled by either administration or the SRO to kind of not subject the student to the, the criminal process. And I was just curious if there's any, you know, any kind of data or numbers to, you know, point to those success stories, if you want to call them that.
Yeah, so I think we could all speak to certain stories with regards to, you know, how that would have taken place, but as far as the data, we're only going to record what action was taken, not what action could have been taken.
Okay. Thank you. This is back for Mr. Hawkins. Can you, can you speak to what percentage of the instances were drug offenses?
Um, see. So in the school year, I see that zero actions, call types are narcotics for this last school year of 19 and 20.
Thank you. In regards to the Crime Stoppers app, is there any, any demographic info tied to those reports?
Talking about from, from who, who reports it?
Correct.
You know, is that, I mean, only if they choose to input that information. It is set up to be completely anonymous if somebody wants to be anonymous.
Okay. But I, I mean, in terms of the person you're filing a report on, is that a line that a person can fill out? So race, ethnicity, is that something that can be included in the report on the Crime Stoppers app?
I'm not sure. I would think it probably is something that they could. You know, when I, when I have seen them, when, when the, when the reports have come to us, generally, it just has a student's name and what school they go to.
Okay, okay. And lastly, is there any data that speaks to MPD's mentorship programs, such as engagement numbers?
As far as like success stories and stuff like that?
You know, like what's the typical outreach annually? How are those interactions, you know, qualified, quantified?
No, I mean, there's just so many different things, like, you know, I know that SRO Greenwood at Norman High does a, a real men mentorship at the, at the high school level. And then you have Sergeant Formby that does Wednesday Warriors at Alcott. We really don't keep those numbers. We just know that the, the programs are actually rolling.
Okay. I think that's all I've got for right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman.
I, I just had two questions. The first one, I think you kind of answered. So all nine SROs are back in schools right now. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the data that you have on your screen right now with the arrests, the state charges, dockets, et cetera, do you have those broken down by how many per school those are?
We do. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Can you share that right now, or is it something you can get us?
I, I think it's definitely something we can get you. Absolutely. This was the only sheet that I pulled up for tonight's meeting, but that's, we, we have that broken down and it is available, yes.
Do you think a majority of them are at like the high schools?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
There. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash.
Yeah, so I see there's no arrests on here. Is that, is it safe to assume that none of these incidences went on permanent records of any sort? Or is it followed the students after they graduate high school?
So permanent record, as far as, as far as the city is concerned, I mean, if, if the, the record, once they turn 18, nothing, nothing carries over. And I think on the state level, I think only, it would only carry over if they were charged with a youthful offender offense as an adult, which I don't, I don't think, pretty sure we have never had anything like that within the SRO program.
Kristy might be able to talk to that a little better on what happens with state charges.
Absolutely.
Does that happen very often?
This is Ava Christie Johnson. The state charges, I, I noticed that number 20 that's up there. Just because the Norman Public Schools submit them to the DA's office does not mean that charges are filed. Generally, any report that we get, we send to the Office of Juvenile Affairs. The whole point of the juvenile code in the state of Oklahoma, of course, is, is treatment if it's needed, and we try to do that at the least restrictive. So the majority of the reports that we get are handled through some type of diversion program, and a juvenile petition is, is not filed. But if a juvenile petition is filed and they are adjudicated a delinquent child, then that adjudication is a confidential juvenile proceeding that can be expunged a year after dismissal. But as far as from Norman Public Schools, really serious charges that are, that rise to the level of youthful, youthful offender, I have not seen. But as far as data, since the School Resource Officers have been in, which I believe was fiscal year 2016, the number of referrals of juveniles that have been referred up to the state has steadily decreased. I believe, and since it was like a hundred and ten, and again, this is Norman Police Department referrals, not just Norman Public Schools. My dad is very big picture. But fiscal year twenty sixteen, there were a hundred and ten. Fiscal year seventeen was a hundred and eight. That kind of corresponds with the school years. And then since fiscal year twenty eighteen, we have not been over one hundred. As far as juveniles that have been referred to the district court for state charges.
Thank you. Could you give me an idea of what general offenses there are responsible for those?
I don't have this specific data in front of me, but generally misdemeanor charges. Some of burglary second degree, which have broken into the school or. In auto burglary, you know, maybe in the school parking lot. The majority of them are, if charges are filed, are handled with probation. The state's goal, at least at the DA's offices, to keep the kids in school and in the community. But get the treatment that they need within the home. And the school resource officers have been so helpful in connecting kids and families with resources. Before it gets to our level. And again, the goal is always safe schools, safe communities. Out at the least restrictive, lowest possible level. And I've been here since twenty eleven. So I've had an opportunity to see the School Resource Officer Program from its inception to today. And they have been an invaluable resource. Every trusted adult in a child's life helps a child be successful. And I would like to see school resource officers at all the schools to just address whatever the students' issues are. Get them the resources that they may need. And and I've been very pleased with the fact that we haven't seen very many serious charges. From Norman Public Schools, I'm here at the DA's office recently.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bearman.
Thank you. I'll start, I guess I'm going to kind of work backwards in my questions so that I don't forget my most recent ones that I didn't write down. But when we talk about seeing kind of some of these declining trends, we know that that's also a trend nationally. And so are we tracking at all kind of where we're falling in terms of that national trend line? Are we dropping below it and actually doing better than the national trend in declining criminal issues at schools? Or are we above it? You know, to me, outcomes and data tracking is really important to know if a program is successful versus just anecdotes. So I didn't know ADA Johnson or Captain Hawkins, if you have any, any insight into that.
The information and data that I received from the Office of Juvenile Affairs, it appears at the state of Oklahoma, I didn't break it down. But we are tracking probably below that national trend in a, in a good direction.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. And then this is probably going to be for Captain Hawkins. But are charges always submitted to district court? Or are there some charges that could be dropped even below that to municipal court, let's say?
Absolutely. You know, municipal court, if anything, charges have to be filed. Municipal court's the preferred way because in municipal court. Students also get a view and an opportunity to participate in the Police Department's Juvenile Intervention Program. They can get some life coaching from different organizations here in town. So we would much rather mediate that that issue and and keep the kids in school. As opposed to, you know, anything else. So, yeah, so if if a charge has to be filed. That's the preferred, the preferred lane would be to do it municipally. But there are some things like, you know, like I said earlier, like an adult, like assault with a deadly weapon type thing. That it just would not be appropriate to to put in a municipal court.
Sure, I appreciate that. Stick with me, Captain Hawkins, because this next one is for you too. Earlier, you mentioned that you have monthly meetings with Mr. Milner to kind of go over your data and look at, look at ways to improve. Do you provide or create any reports or analysis of these data reviews? And can you give me examples of any improvements that you've identified and been able to enact because of these reviews?
Yes, ma'am. So the, like I said, the, so what what you see on the screen now, we keep on a monthly basis and it just builds. And so Justin and I sit down on a monthly basis and discuss those numbers. And when we see something, we address it. One of the examples that I gave earlier was the protective custodies that, you know, we started seeing those and and said, oh, we have to. We have to do something to help those, that situation. And so we got all the SROs CIT certified. I don't, I think it might have been the second year of the School Resource Officer Program. Truancy numbers were up in one school. And so we looked at those numbers and addressed the issues that were surrounding those. To where, to where it came down more normalized with the, with the rest of the schools. So, yeah, we do look at those numbers and 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 talk about those numbers, and we need to make those changes and address some of the, some of the issues, then we certainly do. I mean, that, to me, that is our whole purpose for keeping statistics, is to look at them, find out if we're doing good, what we need to do better. If we need to track something better, if we need to track a different category, if we need to add something to the statistics that we currently cover. We have to continue to monitor these and add to these so that we know that our program is staying on the right track.
I really, I really appreciate that. And do you, have you done or are you, are you planning to do any, or have you at some point? Do any kind of specific demographic review of these, of these incidences that you review monthly? Is that something that you take into consideration? Because, you know, I've seen some somewhat concerning, concerning trends in the racial demographics. And, you know, have you done any targeted efforts in that area to address why there is a disparity in those, in those numbers?
Absolutely. There's been some conversation, a lot of conversation about that. The first thing that I will, that I will notate is on incidents. When it comes to the demographics that you guys have seen, those are based off of incidents. We currently do not separate an incident from a law enforcement action. So everything falls under an incident. We've had discussions about separating those two to better keep track of those. But the statistics that has been thrown out there is is based off of incidents. And an incident could be anything from. You know, two students getting in a fight in the hallway. Or a student approaching an SRO saying that somebody broke into my car and I need to make a report. An incident does not always equate to a, and a law enforcement action. So an officer can be, can get a, can get a call that there's, there's, you know, loud music in the, in the parking lot. And then that officer goes out there. That's an incident. Like I said before, if a student comes to an SRO. And asks for assistance with something, hey, I'm being bullied, or hey, this other student is threatening to beat me up. Those are incidences. So incidences are not always enforcement actions. And one of the conversations that we're having now is separating enforcement actions from those incidents. To to better track our statistics.
Great. And I I appreciate hearing that that is a topic of conversation. From my own perspective, I do think it would be important. To separate out incidences from actual actions. And kind of related to that, have you done or have planned any specific racial bias analysis of your demographics? Because I do think that that would also help kind of analyze these results in a different way. If you do have them separated and you're looking at all incidences, or maybe, maybe a better, maybe a better term is interactions. With students when it comes to things like loud noise in the parking lot complaints, being able to do a specific racial, racial bias. Analysis of all of those interactions to break this down even further. Have you done any of that in the past or do you have any of that planned?
We have not done any of that in the past. That's certainly something that we can look at doing, moving forward for sure.
Okay, I do, I do appreciate that and I I hope you consider it. And my last point is kind of jumping off of. Now I'm getting, now I'm getting my council members all mixed up and I want to give credit where credit is due. I believe it was Councilmember Peacock's questions about the mentorship programs. And kind of looking for, again, kind of specific outcomes tracking. I do encourage you to start keeping some formal results on the outcomes of these programs. All good nonprofits that do mentorship do that. All nonprofits do it just generally. And I think it is. Really important that we not only keep demographic and outcome data on, again, I'm going to say interactions, not incidences. I think it's also important that we put some demographics to these mentorship programs, make sure that they're having some of the outcomes that we aim. For these programs to have. And also to ensure they are reaching a broad range demographic of our schools. And not, you know, kind of disproportionately benefiting, you know, one type of student versus another. And it's going, that's also going to help these programs be more effective and reach more students and reach the students who really are in desperate need of this program. But there might be something that is preventing that connection.
Your honor, just a thought that occurred to me with our pending interviews for our diversity and equity officer. There could be some great insight from that new position to help identify some demographic trends that we may want to track going forward. So hopefully we'll have some additional resources to add some professional expertise to that question and make some improvements. But great question. We appreciate that.
Well, and I appreciate, I appreciate getting that information as well. I do think that'll help. But, you know, in the meantime, I'd love to see, I'd love to see Norman Public Schools and NPD kind of looking at this, at this data in a, in a different way. And making sure that it's, that it's even more comprehensive than it is. Because I do think there are things that are displayed really, really well here. And I think there, there are also some underlying storylines that are getting lost because of the way the data is structured. So I think continuing to change that and improve it will help everyone feel more comfortable with the program. And at least in the form that we have now, outside of this grant. I think we need to see some more comprehensive data to really get a sense of of what we're looking at here. But I do appreciate the work that's been done so far and the diligence in looking at.
I'll jump in because my comments were similar to Councilor Bearman's last comment and Councilmember Peacock's about feedback. Not so much detailed in the mentorship, but I agree, we need all of that. But also kind of more surface, like have you surveyed the school? Just generally to to find out how the students feel about the presence, how the teachers feel about the presence. I I don't think that, as a parent, I've had a survey. But so, yeah, I was just wondering if, because you always hear the bad stories or you hear the great stories. And I want to hear the average stories. So is that kind of data being collected?
Not from the Norman Police Department side. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure about the Norman Public School side. And I was just asked to stop sharing the screen for something about YouTube. So I'm going to stop sharing the screen. And if anybody has any questions about it, we'll come back to it. But then I'll pass it off to Mr. Milner.
Mayor, we have, we have not surveyed as far as sending out a survey. Something that we stay in contact with our site administrators. And of course, they have contact with the teachers and students as to the interactions. So they're monitoring this all the time. Those factors also, in fact, go into even the selection process. And and Captain Hawkins was very detailed in his presentation. One of the things that we didn't talk about is just the effort that goes into selecting. SROs and making sure they're the right fit for the position. And then as we look at the school. Making sure they're the right fit for that particular school and its identity as well, which I think has been done very well. And there's been a great transition into those positions, which has really been seen to be just one of the faculty amongst the, the school. So, no, we have not done an official survey, but I don't want to leave you with the impression that we, we don't have a pulse. As to what's going on in the school and how things are working together.
Gotcha. And City Manager Pyle, I appreciate your thoughts on how our diversity and equity officer could help really crunch that data. But MPS has a diversity and equity officer as well. So perhaps that's a great opportunity for collaboration. Now with the MOU, and I apologize, I am walked out of my iPad. That hasn't happened in a long time. But I reviewed the MOU when we first discussed the grant. And it's a five-year agreement that automatically renews, correct?
You're talking about the MOU?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So how often do we review that contract? I mean, I, it would seem that, you know. How can we amend it and put in there, we would like this data before it automatically renews?
Yeah, I mean, certainly we could, you know, between public schools and and Norman Police Department, we could discuss anything in regards to the MOU. As far as updating it.
Because I, I mean, I have heard amazing things about the program and I've heard some concerns about the program. And I agree, if if you've got clear goals. You've got a mission statement, it would be nice to see how we're doing on that, which would also allow us to, as Councilor Bearman pointed out, track how we're doing. On a state level, on a national level. I know many of those officers personally, and they're very good people. And I've heard some, again, wonderful stories. But I want to make sure that we're doing the best we can with the program. And I think having that data and an automatic trigger to review it and also review it publicly. Would be a great way to, you know, institute some transparency and and build some trust further with all aspects of our community. Not just the ones that are raving about the program.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I've got some budget talk or questions with, for Anthony probably. But I did just want to talk a little bit about the funding mechanism. So we know that the original PSST was passed, I think in two thousand eight or seven. And it was, I think, forty-one new police officers, thirty-two new firefighters, building two new fire stations. And then there was a lot of question back then, though I recall, criticism about. Is it a good idea to hire that many new positions on a temporary sales tax? And so when it came, when it came time for the temporary sales tax to expire. I was on the council and we went through a process. Norman Police Department, under Chief Humphrey. Did advocate that we renew it early. And staff at Norman Public Schools and Norman PD were all involved. And the push was that we needed to make it permanent because these are permanent positions. After all, that we've, that we've already created with the original one. And now we're talking about creating thirteen additional. Positions with PSST Part Two and making it permanent. I definitely felt pretty skeptical about making it permanent right away. I personally felt it probably should have been renewed as a temporary tax. One more time. And then it would be around this time exactly, we'd be looking at renewing it again and making it permanent. Twenty twenty-one. And so, given what we've seen happen with the PSST over the years. That fund, we have, we have fulfilled the obligations of the original one. We've done many of the things in Part Two, including the radio system and most of the SRO positions. But I did want Anthony to talk about the current state of the public safety sales tax. And where we're projecting it to go. I would also mention that when we made the public safety sales tax permanent in twenty fourteen. There were seven thousand four hundred sixty-three votes cast and it only passed by a hundred and thirty-nine votes. It was very controversial and had a lot of unanswered questions and concerns about. The sales tax ability to support the obligations we were going to be asking. So I would like Anthony. To talk about the current status of the PSST, which is what pays for the SRO program.
Okay, so in fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. The public safety sales tax generated nine million four hundred eight thousand dollars. The use tax was $1,117,000. Total expenditures for the public safety sales tax outweighed the revenues from the public safety sales tax by about $1,522,000. So, so basically the general fund subsidized the public safety sales tax fund by $1,522,000. And it's projected that that will increase in, in future years. And I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. I think when we last talked about it, you mentioned that in the five-year projections that it could still be in the negative unless something drastically changes with the way things are going with sales tax. Is that correct?
Yes, it's projected that this subsidy from the general fund to the public safety sales tax fund will, will increase to a little over $3 million by fiscal year 2025, '26.
So in the next five-
Pretty steady increase each year.
So in the next five years, it's projected that the public safety sales tax will need to be subsidized by the general fund more than double what it's currently being subsidized.
That's the current projection, yes.
And what are the current obligations and expenses of the public safety sales tax that are causing it to go in the negative by so much?
Well, I will first say that when the public safety sales tax was originally envisioned and then was envisioned to be made permanent, it was always projected that expenses would grow faster than the revenues. We knew that was the case with public safety salaries in particular. We did not expect that the revenues would grow as slowly as they have. So it has been worse than what we projected. When we originally projected that the revenues would, would be outstripped by the expenditures, we did think that the general fund would be in a better position to provide that subsidy because we thought that, that there would be a, that there'd be a stormwater utility to relieve the general fund of those costs. And that was the discussion at the time the public safety sales tax was being proposed at its one-half percent level as opposed to a higher level that was also discussed, but not proposed to the voters.
I, I do, I appreciate that, Anthony. I do recall that the two top general fund remedies were ending the University of North Park tax increment and creating a stormwater utility. We've been able to do one of those so far in the increment part, but unfortunately no utility for stormwater. And so the current expenses of the PSST, we can, have we completely paid for the radio system, which was the most expensive expenditure overall?
Yes, the radio system project is pretty much done and paid for. The, the other outstanding capital, critical capital needs, as they were defined in the ordinance, is primarily for the emergency operations center. There's about $6.5 million in remaining bond proceeds for that. And then there is the relocation of Fire Station Five that is yet to be done. So those are the major remaining critical capital needs. And that's vehicle replacements and those sorts of things that are, that are projected to be done. But the major things are those two.
Okay. And the, the things that voters approved in the PSST, the city hasn't taken money from the PSST and spent it on other things, have we?
No, sir.
Okay. What, based on your interpretation or understanding of what was voted on, are the, is the SRO pro, SRO program something we are mandated to do?
Yes, it is. It is one of the requirements in the public safety sales tax ordinance.
And does it have, I guess, kind of a, some room to work in regard to the budget for it, though?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Like, we have an obligation to fulfill the positions, but if the public safety sales tax is in the negative budget-wise, are we obligated?
Counsel certainly must have the discretion to, to adjust the timing of, and you've certainly done that over the years. We're, we are behind schedule. And we, and when we thought we would fully implement the school resource officer positions as well as remaining two dispatcher positions. We have two unfilled emergency vehicle mechanic positions. So, so yes, council has maintained its discretion to adjust the timing of when those expenditures happen through the appropriation process. The council doesn't hand a budget.
Okay. And I appreciate that. And let's see. And just to, for clarity, during the budget that we recently passed, we did pass a budget that subsidized the public safety sales tax fund from the general fund. Is that right?
Yes.
We made it whole, I guess. Okay. My, I guess, when it comes to accepting this grant, I really just, because of the status of the public safety sales tax fund, I'm kind of really struggling coming up with where in the PSST we would find the matching funds that are, that come along with this grant. Do you have any recommendation on that?
I can only recommend that the matching funds would come in the short term and in the long term from the general fund. There'd be just, you know, the, the increased subsidy.
Okay. And this might be a question for Daryl or Legal. So what is the status of the funding relationship with the SRO program in Norman Public Schools?
Currently, their contribution is in the $670,000 range annually. In conversations with Dr. Migliarino, we did talk in March when it was decided schools would stay virtual for the rest of the school year that they did not have any intentions to attempt to change their funding contribution, recognizing that everybody's budget was set and nobody anticipated school resource officers missing out on the last couple of months of that obligation. Current status, and Mr. Milner's on the phone with us too. My understanding is that the state of funding for public schools in the state of Oklahoma was hindered by early on drastic reduction in the price of a barrel of oil. So gas and oil revenue to the state of Oklahoma was impacted significantly along with the impacts of COVID-19. So the school district is experiencing budget deficit is my current understanding. And not knowing when that will change, they seem to be comfortable with the current funding level, but unable to discuss any increases in that funding level. And I'll ask Mr. Milner to clean that up for me if I misrepresented what Mr., what Dr. Migliarino shared with me.
Yeah, City Manager Paul, I think you are pretty much on target. You're right, we started when this, in the inception, about $425,000 for the program. And we're up to about $687,000 with regards to our commitment. It continues to make that. And we, as you mentioned, we did so even when we turned virtual. We committed to that and we stuck to it. With regards to being able to add to the grant, that was not something that we were able to do in the midst of a budget and the downturn of the economy and obviously with COVID expenses that go along with that.
I appreciate those answers. I think from a city standpoint, we have the same budgetary concerns. The city is completely relying on sales tax revenue. And we've, for past six months, we've had businesses closed or reduced hours, reduced capacity. Some businesses have closed permanently. So, I mean, we're in the same boat, I would say, as Norman Public Schools when it comes to being kind of maxed out on what we could do right now, in my opinion. I know for myself personally, I've always felt that the SRO program, because it is security for the school system and their facilities, that, that really should be the responsibility of the school system. But I was willing to be a partner for sure and go in 50/50. So I feel pretty strongly personally that any further budgetary decisions with the SRO program, it's got to be a 50/50 joint venture for me to feel comfortable with it going forward. I know we're both, school district and the city are having a really tough time right now. And based on what I'm seeing, sales tax-wise, I don't know that it's going to be improving drastically anytime soon. So that's kind of where I am based on the information I have right now and why I've been real hesitant to want to accept this grant, knowing that, how is the city going to pay for it the next four years? And why should the city be the sole entity responsible for it? Thank you.
Councilmember Petron.
Thank you for the presentation, Officer Hawkins, Captain Hawkins, that is. It was informative and I appreciate it. I guess I have questions for several of you. I guess I'll try to break it down and start. A lot of the questions that I had budget-wise, Councilmember Holman covered. And I share many of his same concerns there. So I won't go over all of those. But Captain Hawkins, one of the, in the slideshow, we spoke about kind of the main goals or objectives with the SRO program. And one thing I did not hear, which is what most parents that I've spoken with and teachers, for that matter, are school shooters. And so I want, I feel like it's important that the public understands that what the SRO's role is, if any, in hedging off a school shooter.
They, of course, would be the, the first officer on scene and would be able to relay any information of, and well, let me back up. First, we have gone away from school shooting, calling school shooters. And we have gone to active aggressors. Nationally, we have seen people enter a school with a knife or a bat or something like that. And so really, just talking about shooting-wise really kind of made people think, okay, if, if there's a gun involved, this is what's going to happen. So we went to active aggressor training instead of active shooter. And so they are, the, the SROs are first on scene to address the situation and also relay information to any, any other officers that are responding.
Okay. Would you agree with me that an SRO, there, from what I've learned in the last several months of having these conversations, I've learned a lot. But, but they're not really standing at the door in the, in the, you know, waiting in the mornings to see that there's not a, a school aggressor coming in with a backpack of weapons. Like, that's not really, they're, they're milling around and, and all over the campus, not necessarily posted up to intercept at any given hour. Sorry, what'd you call it?
More so now than before because the schools have now gone to secure vestibule, vestibules, I always have problems with that word, to control access in and out of the schools. So there is not as much need for an officer to stand right at the door and also milling around or walking around the school perimeter. There's always other doors that kids can open up from the outside or from the inside. And so they're always walking around checking out everything, not just standing at the front door.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Milner about that in a little bit, but I don't want to lose my place. But, um, okay, so, some, about, some others have already asked some of these questions, so I'm skipping over them. Okay, you talked about in the, the slideshow about extracurricular activities and that SRO's work events, maybe for example, on a football game, maybe a high school football game. And that there are also 300 other uniformed officers that it could be, you know, called upon or working any given event throughout the year. Is that part of an SRO salary or is that overtime?
So it wasn't, the number of the 300 was that there's 300 events that SROs and some other officers do work throughout the school year. For instance, Norman High, Norman North football game generally takes about 15 officers to, to work. And we don't have that many SROs. So we do have specifically trained officers within the police department that are trained with the SRO mindset to help us out in those situations. So it's 300 events that, that are, that are dealt with throughout the entire school year, most of which the SROs take care of in the-
So if an SRO is at the event, is that part of their sal, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Part of their salary job or is that overtime?
So, so it is overtime, but it is also factored into the $680,000 that the Norman Public Schools already splits with the city of Norman.
Okay.
So that, so there's, there are a certain number of hours that are factored in to the SRO program on a yearly basis in, in finding out what an annual total will be. And the, the Norman Public Schools pays for half of that.
Thank you. Okay, so one of the questions that I've seen from the public, and I think that it was kind of somewhat covered, but do we have statistical data that shows, I guess the way they're putting it, that the SRO program is a proven benefit? So in other words, are we, we're, we're keeping statistical data about incidents and interactions? Do we have any sort of statistical data that says, look, this is a success and we can show you why?
Other than student parental and faculty feedback, no, we are not keeping any type of a, a statistic on success stories of mentoring, success stories of non-action or referred to some type of social services. We're not currently keeping any of those statistics.
That's okay. I just, it's fine. Are any of our SRO's licensed social workers?
I'm not sure if he is still licensed, but I know that we have an SRO that came to us from being a social worker. But he would be the only one that would be close to that.
Okay, and, and when we're talking about hiring new SROs, would that be something that, would there be a way in this MOU that council could say, okay, if we're going to be hiring new SROs, we want them to be licensed social workers in addition to being an officer? Like you were talking about, coming to us from social work background or child psychology background. And the reason why I'm getting at this is because I have a little bit of discomfort with expecting that an officer is going to be a mentor or have some major emphasis in child psychology when there are people that are trained and also officers. I know there are other programs around the country that are doing that. When they put out their hiring process for a SRO position, they're looking for those particular people.
We currently do not have that as a requirement. You know, the SRO selection process, they, is extensive. It has Norman Public Schools involved in it. Mr. Milner has sat in on boards for getting SROs. We definitely are very selective when we, when we are looking at SROs and who's going to be in the schools. It's not based off of how many years an individual has been here or anything like that. We look for a track record within our officers, like, has this officer that wants to be an SRO been part of our juvenile intervention program to where they have been a mentor for- been part of our juvenile intervention program to where they have been a mentor, uh, for a student in the past? Those types of things are what we look for in our SROs. We want the SROs to be in the schools, um, uh, you know, for the kids, for the students. Um, and, and, you know, not to be heavy-handed or, or anything like that. So, um, we look for those strengths, but we do not require any type of a social work background, uh, of any, of any kind.
Benefit, I will say, um, council member, in a school setting is we do employ counselors and we have student advocates at our, uh, secondary sites, so that, working alongside with the SROs, I feel like we can address that from that partnership approach.
Okay. Um, well, Mr. Miller, I've got you. Well, he was speaking about the vestibules. Um, what are some of the, I know that the, um, bond, recent bond elections, I think that that was, uh, some of those monies went to outfit the schools for, um, intercepting active aggressors. Yeah, I'm learning, Officer Hawkins. Can you speak to, for the public to understand, like, what on NPS is in, is happening infrastructurally to, um, lock down the facilities and keep the kids safe from those aggressors?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, we've been very fortunate in this community that the citizens have passed our bond issues that, that have had a focus on school safety, uh, that are specific to the vestibules that Captain Hawkins mentioned, uh, visitor management system that does, uh, a check against the sex offender, uh, before anyone would be screened in, whether a visitor or a parent. Um, so those, uh, are set up to, uh, protect our students, um, to some degree from the outside threats, uh, in addition to control access and cameras. But I'll also remind everyone that I, in it, we mentioned it in our presentation a couple of weeks ago as unfortunately, the threat's not always outside. Uh, the threat's unfortunately is inside the school too. And I mentioned in our presentation from a study that of, uh, I think it was a total of, uh, twelve out of seventy-four incidents were outside strainer, strangers. Uh, the mid, the sixty-two were from within with regards to those threats that were studied. So the importance of having the SRO not just stand post at the front door, but be able to move about the students, interact with the students, uh, to be able to identify those red flags. We try to train our teachers, uh, to look for, and it takes all of us, we take a responsibility there. Uh, but the critical eye of an officer, uh, in making sure that we're interacting with students and knowing the look for is, has been incredibly important to have in our schools.
Thank you. Um, Captain Hawkins, you mentioned the Crime Stoppers program, and I think that, um, council member Peacock spoke to it as well. Does that program exist irrespective of SROs? So if it was a small district and they wanted to be a part of the Crime Stopper program and have the app, is that something that they, or a private school? Is that something that they could, uh, you have to have an SRO program to have the Crime Stoppers?
No, ma'am, I.
Or do you know?
No, I, I, I think, I think that would be open to anybody. It, it's, 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 um, not just because of our SRO program. It was just something that we were able to, to bring in, um, to kind of pair with our, our SRO program.
Okay, yeah, it was a random question. I've wondered even if it went like with hospitals and other places, like, if other places could utilize that. Um, so who initiates enforcement? Is it SROs or is it NPS? That's what I was trying to understand when you were giving the original.
Generally, generally, um, generally it's NPS. Um, there are times if, if, uh, an officer, um, sees something in the parking lot, um, that, that they will initiate. Um, but it's always, it's always, or generally just a joint effort. Um, one thing does not happen with, without the other. So even if an officer, um, uh, contacts a student for something first, administration is always brought in, um, to help figure out a best solution for that, that situation. So it's not, it's not an officer just walking around in the parking lot, snatching up a student, throwing them in the back of a police car and taking off with them. Uh, it is a joint effort with the administration of the school, uh, on the Norman Public School side and the SRO working together to find the best solution for that student in that situation.
Okay, so if, for example, if, if the SRO saw a kid's, a high schooler smoking in the parking lot, would they issue the citation right, right then and there? Or would they tell the administration and then decide with the administration whether a citation is appropriate?
Uh, I believe it'd be brought to the administration's, um, uh, attention and then they would address it from there.
Okay.
The, 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 the administration has never left out of a, of a decision. Um, they are, are always, um, they always know what, what happens. And, and like I said, oftentimes we are brought in on the, on the back end of things.
Okay. And then this, when the citizens decide to, uh, press charges or do a docket, um, is that done at the school grounds?
Generally, yes. Generally, if we have, uh, you know, and a lot of time, now, it's more middle school than, than anything else. Um, but, um, generally, if you have a couple of kids that get into a, get into a, an altercation on the playground or whatever, in the cafeteria, um, uh, the, uh, the students are brought to the principal's office, then the SRO, um, may or may not be involved. Um, sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't, just depends. Um, the SRO definitely gets involved if a parent shows up and says, that student assaulted my student and/or my child and I want to, um, press charges against them. Um, then, then that's when an SRO would come in, allow that citizen to sign a docket against the, the student. Uh, and then it would, then it would go to municipal court for there, from there. Uh, and Catherine, my, uh, Catherine Walker might be able to speak to this a little bit better. A lot of times when municipal charges are filed, especially in a situation like that, sometimes it goes through to mediation, um, to where ultimately the charge may not even get filed, even in municipal court. And it could be just mediated out.
Okay, but it's done at school and not in PD headquarters?
That's correct. It's handled on site, on the, on the school site.
Okay. Um, so when you're hiring for new SROs, where do you go? Is, this is done from within, correct? It's not, or typically it would be done from within?
It's, yes, we, so when we are looking for new, for new SROs, um, a, um, memo is sent up to the chief, um, to open the process. Um, then, once the chief agrees to open up the process, uh, the process is opened up for at least a two-week time period for officers to, uh, put in their letter of interest. Um, their urge to put in any kind of information, um, from their background or their training that would, uh, better assist them, uh, to become an SRO. Uh, once all of the applicants put in, um, their, um, uh, memos to, uh, be an SRO, a board, uh, is held, um, uh, of supervisors within the police department. And then, of course, Norman Public Schools, uh, representatives, which has been, uh, Justin Milner on a couple of them. Uh, questions, uh, questions are asked during that board, uh, of the SROs to include some scenario-type questions of how they would handle things. Uh, and in those scenarios, we really look for, um, you know, one of the questions that is asked is if a situation happens, will they take action or will they work with, uh, uh, school administration in order to, um, mediate that situation? Um, because we want to look for those, um, officers that are wanting to mediate the situation instead of just, uh, charging the student with, with a crime. Um, so, uh, we, we have questions set up for that to, to see what we're looking for. Uh, and then, uh, a selection is made, sent to the chief, and the chief has the final say.
Okay. Um, council member Holman asked about use of force data, and I would be interested in getting that too, um, whenever you have the opportunity to supply that. Um, in the Facebook seminar, um, I, I don't remember what it was called exactly, but there are several, um, representatives from the Norman Police Department as well as from Norman Public Schools. Mr. Milner was present as well. Um, there was a conversation about, um, students of color being three times more likely to be involved in an incident with an SRO. And what are we doing about that?
Again, um, that, that number certainly is concerning. However, I would go back to number one, incidents. This is, this is a number based off of incidents, uh, not, not enforcement actions. So again, if a student comes to an SRO and says, my car just got broken into, that's an incident, uh, where we take a report. Um, uh, I dropped, I dropped my school, uh, laptop and it shattered. We take a report on that, that's an incident. Um, there are conversa- so, um, so just because it's an incident does not mean enforcement action has been taken. Uh, as I mentioned to council member Beerman a while ago, uh, there are conversations now, uh, of separating, uh, enforcement action from incidents moving forward, um, so that we can, so that we can try to better look at the data and identify, um, if that is an issue or not. Um, we don't hide from the, the statistics that we keep. Uh, we want to learn from the statistics that we keep. If there's an issue, then we want to know about that issue so that we can address that issue.
Okay, um. What about individual data kept for, or individual SRO data that might be kept? In other words, is there any way that you know, are you tracking whether or not one particular officer is more inclined to, um, be a part of that three times as likely to be interacting with a student of color versus another officer? In other words, are you able to pare down when you look at incident reports? And see, you know, if there's any disparities going on there?
No, we don't have, we do not track that. Uh, I would, I would think that that would stand out, um, through either, um, school admission, school administration side, uh, or, or our side. Uh, but again, we don't currently track that. Um, and it's something that we can, we can look at in the future.
I think it would be important to be able to track that, just, um, as a, you know, as the city, um, and, you know, supervisory level, you're not there all the time to be able to see how they're interacting. And I know that kids aren't always the most comfortable to come forward and say something. Um, because you, you are the ultimate authority as officers, um, in their schools. So we hear about bad apples, and I'm not saying that any of our SROs necessarily are, but whether it's anywhere in society, I think it's good to be able to track that so that it does stand out to you when you're getting reports that you see disparity. Um, of all the areas that we've talked about today, where do you think that you see the most likelihood of improvement? Like where could, where can your program improve? Aside from, we need more officers, I mean, I get that, but what, where's an area, a good area for growth? For the department SRO program?
Um, so I would, I would say in our data, um, as we've, as we've talked earlier, um, keeping some more specific data. Uh, we already keep above and beyond what the, uh, MOU calls for. Uh, but I think we can do better, uh, about some of the data that we keep and some of the data that we collect. Uh, so certainly that that's, that's an area, um, uh, where, where the program can grow.
Uh, council member Petron, just to, just to add on to that, um, most of our systems are designed with initial anticipation of what questions we're hoping to be able to answer. And it works the same way when we're developing accounting systems. Systems are designed so we can answer questions that we anticipate. Great conversation tonight, giving us wonderful insight as to the types of questions we would love to be able to answer going forward. And I think the, the, the information exists. We just haven't captured it before, weren't anticipating, uh, questions along those lines. But that's, uh, that's why we're able to change and adapt and, uh, take note and start, uh, identifying those data points to collect from this point going forward. So, um, that system is always adaptable and our goal is to make sure we can continue to adapt it to answer new questions as they arise, because we know there's always going to be new questions. So thank you very much.
And there's always areas for growth too. I'm always concerned when anybody says, oh, we're doing great, we don't need to improve anywhere. We're humans and we're fallible, there's always room for growth for everything that we do. Um, okay. I think I have questions that are about, um, the funding as well, but council member Holman did a really good job with it. I'm, um, continuing to collect feedback from my ward and from teachers and from parents. And, um, I, I also have the, I wasn't here in twenty fourteen when, or I was on council in twenty fourteen when this was passed. Um, and so I appreciate council member Holman's, um, institutional knowledge there about what it was like on that side of the decision-making. And I'm almost, with as controversial as this has been, I'm almost considering that with PSST being upside down, um, and the general fund is also, um, in dire straits, especially with COVID, that it may be time to, um, ask the public formally what, what they want to do going forward, about this. So I, I, that's kind of what I'm thinking right now, but, um, I'm growing, subject to change, you never know. So that's all I have right now, thank you.
Councilmember Bearman.
Okay, I have a lot of notes and a lot of questions. I'll stick with, uh, Captain Hawkins since he's still kind of here and prepped. Um, and I do, I do want to start with just kind of a gentle pointing out both to, uh, city manager Pyle and to Captain Hawkins that I do feel like a lot of these questions are ones that we all, NPD, NPS and city council should have anticipated when we were putting together a program like this. But we didn't, and now here we are, and we will move forward. Um, and I think it's really great that we're going to be looking at these kinds of things. I do wish that we'd been doing this since June, although there hasn't been as much reason to with schools being closed, but kind of get the process in place. Um, you know, we heard a lot of feedback in June about some concerns with the SRO program. Um, and I'm glad, I'm glad that we're taking those steps now. Um, I do also, I want to reiterate that I do agree that we, that additional data comprehensiveness would be important, because I think those results can cut both ways. It might show that there are some concerning, uh, trends in our data, but it might also show some very positive trends as well. So I think the data can cut both ways and, and be both positive and negative. Um, and so I think it's really important that we have some, um, this, this probably a question for Captain Hawkins. You were talking, when you were talking about the process of hiring these SROs, I believe I recall that this grant specifically requires new hires, however. So would that process still be the same, just instead of putting the application out to our sting group of officers? We would be going through our regular NPD new hire process as well as this additional layer of SRO training? Is that correct?
So, and, and John Stiggy's on here and he might be able to answer this a little bit better, but I, I believe the grant would hire additional officers that we then would, uh, apply, uh, open up the application process for the SROs once those officers are hired and trained. And then the SROs that would be selected would not be the brand new SROs. Those, those individuals would backfill the, uh, tenured SROs or the officers that would want to become an SRO at that point in time. Is that correct, uh, Mr. Stiggy?
That's my understanding as well. The, the details, of course, would have to be worked out with the grant manager and the city manager as well as the chief of police as to how those transitions go. But, um, uh, my understanding is that the grant would pay for the hiring of three, or correction, four new officers.
Okay, um, I would love some additional clarity on that, could even be in the form of an email. Uh, maybe City Legal can weigh in as well, because the memo seemed pretty clear that this grant was for the SRO program. And if there's a, if there is a perfectly legal and above-board way to kind of weave our way through that to use existing officers instead of the new hires, that it seemed very clear the grant required, um, I'd love some certainty on that. Um, just because I think that that's something that we don't want to get our hand caught in the jar about. So I appreciate that. Um, and now the rest of my questions are back to Mr. Francisco. I actually do have some additional budget questions. Um, so I know, Mr. Francisco, you said that our general fund subsidy to, uh, the PSST in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year was one and a half million. Uh, but are we obligated to subsidize the PSSP from the general fund?
Well, to the extent that council has appropriated the, the funds to the public safety sales tax fund, then yes, we are obligated to, to provide those services and pay for them from someplace. And it's just that the general fund has been. the most flexible and really without legal restrictions from some other place, the only place to pay for it.
Okay. And then this will probably be a question for Catherine Walker. Um, but can you talk to me about, again, once more about what the phrasing in the ballot language of the PSST when it says, to the extent feasible, revenues will be used to pay for A, B, C, D, all the way down to Z? What does to the extent feasible mean?
Sure. Um, to the extent feasible means we can't predict our sales tax revenues exactly. And so if we don't receive sufficient PSST revenues to fund these projects, uh, we don't have to fund them right then. And that's why when Anthony talks about how we've already slowed our rollout of the SRO program, uh, that's what we've been doing to manage the revenues that we've received on PSST that have fallen short of expectations. The issue with the transfer from the general fund, um, is, is practical too. You can't leave a fund balance in the negative when you adopt a budget. And so that money has to be transferred or you have to cut from that fund. Uh, what you're funding, which would be officers primarily. And so far our council has told us they don't want to do, do those kind of cuts. And so we have always subsidized, uh, the PSST fund with general fund money.
Okay, but the council is legally allowed to do that, to say simply, we don't have the money to subsidize it anymore. Therefore, we're going to have to make some choices about what we are going to fund with the remainder of what we expect to bring in with the PSST.
Yes, the goal should still always be to fulfill the, the objectives of the PSST as the revenues come in. But of course, when they fall short, we, you have the ability to make adjustments as necessary to meet either the revenues or to increase the revenues in the fund by subsidizing it with general fund revenue.
Right, kind of basic budget. You can either increase the money you have coming in or reduce the amount of money you have going out. Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear because one of my concerns, um, and Mr. Francisco, do you believe that this is a sustainable trend that the city is on with subsidizing the PSST in kind of an unrestricted manner?
It becomes a matter of priority. Um, and the council has, um, maintained to the extent feasible, I kind of like that term, um, to continue the, uh, public safety sales tax obligations that were, that were set out when that ordinance was passed. Um, uh, it's just that we have not been able to fully roll out the program, um, to, to, on the time schedule that was originally envisioned, uh, but, but we certainly hope to be able to at some point in the future.
So, but that leads me into this next question. Um, we are looking at a grant that by this kind of what I consider a make or break year that you've mentioned for the subsidizing of the public safety sales tax, which is the 2024, 2025 fiscal year of $3 million. If we accept this grant, how much money on top of that $3 million will we be required to subsidize because of these four positions?
About, um, about $300,000 more. Um, and remember that the subsidy in fiscal year 26 assumes that the public schools have increased their portion of the SRO costs. So, um, there's a lot of things built in that would be, um, baked in cost that, that are not assumed in that $3 million figure.
Right. That doesn't, and that doesn't include the continually increasing cost of these salaries from years six through however long they decide to still be police officers with the city of Norman.
That's correct.
So to me, that is also kind of the crux of my concern with this is that we're not just committing to a five-year grant. We're committing to positions for the long-term and we do have more flexibility than we think. And I think it's going to be in the not-too-distant future when we're going to have to make some very significant choices about what we're going to do with the PSST generally and the SRO program specifically. Especially if it looks like we might have reached the ceiling that our funding partner is willing to provide for the foreseeable future. So I understand, I understand the position that Norman Public Schools is in. As Councilmember Holman said, that's exactly the same position that we are in. Um, and we have costs, continually increasing costs that we have also not addressed in any other way, despite some very significant attempts to fund a stormwater utility. And so I just don't know that we are in the place to be able to assume these kinds of costs, knowing that these costs are going to spiral out of control in just four years. Um, and so I do have one final question. This might be for Chief Foster. This might be for City Manager Pyle. When did we apply for this grant?
Uh, this grant was applied for in February. Uh, actually it's been, uh, applied for every February since 2015. This was actually one of, uh, Chief Humphreys, uh, initiated actions to try to come up with, uh, additional sources to fund uh, that school resource officer program. So that application's been regular and reoccurring, uh, since 2015.
And, uh, this is the first year we've gotten?
Correct.
Okay. And I know that neither you nor Chief Foster were in your existing roles, uh, back when we first applied for this. Um, but did we know when we applied this year that it would require a local matching grant?
Or local matching? Actually, uh, yes, knew there would be a matching requirement. And, um, those actions happen kind of based on prior, um, actions. As Mr. Francisco indicated, there had been conscious, um, decisions made to fund PSST expenses above and beyond what PSST revenue collections had been. Uh, and up until the June, uh, budget meeting, uh, that there was no sense of a change in that direction. So, uh, the fact that, um, we are having this conversation now, um, you know, up until, uh, June budget adoption, we were on, you know, looking, working off of prior council press, uh, precedent set, uh, to try to implement that PSST program. Um, you know, to its ultimate, uh, requirements in terms of body counts, uh, et cetera. So, um, staff makes recommendations and takes actions based on prior council actions. And when council, uh, wants to change direction, that's great. We are able to change in and adjust and maneuver accordingly. So, um, you know, we'll be following the lead based on council's, uh, direction, uh, for this particular funding and, uh, that will, uh, kind of adjust how we, uh, pursue grant, uh, funding opportunities in the future.
Sure. And I, I completely understand that. My question was more aimed at, uh, if we knew that there was going to be a matching grant, did we discuss this with Norman Public Schools about them pitching in for their half of the local share? I mean, I understand when the baton gets passed to you, you pass the baton upwards. So I understand that this grant was applied for regularly. Um, but at any point in the years that we have been applying for this grant, had there been formal conversations with Norman Public Schools about absorbing their 50% of the local match and then the 50% moving forward?
Uh, I'm going to ask Justin if he remembers those conversations.
I know. I hate asking you that because I know you weren't here, but.
Justin's got a little more history than I do in that conversation with the administration.
Uh, to my knowledge, no. I do not recall being asked about that. Uh, to the other question that with regards to, uh, you know, we have committed to this fiscal year, uh, to the amount that we were agreed to for the current, um, program. And, and we're not swaying from that. Uh, but no, not to my knowledge that we've been asked about an additional 50% of the grant.
Okay. And, and to me, that's, uh, a really important forward for, 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 where we have funding partners involved, we really need to run it by them first. Um, because I feel like part of this position that we're in would have been avoidable. I mean, I think it's entirely understandable that Norman Public Schools is facing a budget crisis. It's entirely understandable that we are too. And I'm not entirely sure that back in February, we would have had as NPS and NPD and City of Norman enough foresight to know exactly what the rest of 2020 would bring. Um, I sure know I would have done things like buy lottery tickets and stock up on Lysol disinfecting spray way, way earlier than I already did. Um, but I do think that these are really important conversations for us to be having with our funding partners before we apply for grants that at least in, in sentiment, if not in legal paperwork in the MOU, um, assumes a matching grant with our, assumes a match with our funding partners. I think we need to have those conversations before we apply for these grants because we could have answered a lot of these questions way earlier on if we had had these conversations beforehand. So I think that would just be a good policy moving forward, that if we're going to be applying for something that we're in with someone else on, we run it past all parties involved first.
Makes perfect sense, Your Honor. I have a feeling we were, uh, focused on getting from nine to 13, um, looking for external funding to come in and support the cause. Um, yeah, with, uh, definitely not having that matching conversation on the front burner. That is true and correct.
All right. Well, I appreciate it. That's all I've got for now. I'm sure the other wickedly smart people on this, on this Zoom will generate more questions for me, but for now that's it. Thanks.
I'm going to jump in if that's all right. Uh, based on Councilor Beerman's questions. Um, Old Man Holman, our, our human history book, can you remind me of when we got the federal grant money to, that we hired police and fire for? And then when it ended, we jacked up our water rates, which is exactly why we have to, we're the only city in the state of Oklahoma that votes on the raising or creation of a utility? Was it the seventies?
Yeah. Um, if I recall correctly, it actually was a federal grant under the Nixon administration, uh, to combat the war on drugs. Um, the violent crime rate in the 1970s was also the highest of any decade in modern history, uh, about double what it is today. And so, uh, the Nixon administration gave cities all across the country, federal grants to hire police officers. Norman was one of them. Uh, but from what I understand, around when the Ford administration came in, that grant ended and the city council was faced with, uh, do we fire all these new officers we hired or do we come up with funding another way? And so the city council at that time decided, uh, they would increase utility rates, uh, for water and sanitation and so on. And, uh, use that, those, uh, rate increases to pay for police, um, salaries. So the citizens did not take that very well and initiated a petition and took that power away from the city council, I think that in 1974 or five, something like that. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. I, I knew you wouldn't let me down. Uh, I wanted to bring that up because I don't want us to get into that situation again. Um, so I guess I have a two-part question. Uh, number one, how badly would the program be impacted if we did get to this crucial point of 25, 26, we're $3 million in the hole? And we have to further subsidize because of the grant. If we did have to lay officers off SRO specifically, how would that impact the overall health of the program? And then, uh, is, I guess this one's for Mr. Francisco. Is the answer, we take the PSST back to Norman residents and raise it? Clearly not sustainable on what it is. I mean, I went to law school, not math school, and I can figure that out, but so.
That's one thing that council could do. And I will say that again, when public safety sales tax two was being proposed, part of the discussion was to raise the rate. Which, and, and I will say that's what I recommended. I mean, 5/8% or 3/4% instead of 1/2% because we knew that, that the expenditures were going to grow faster than the revenues. Now, when we get to that point, whether it's 2025 or 2026 or whenever it may be, when I say that council will have to make prioritized decisions, it may or may not be cutting the SRO program to, to make up for the shortfall in the overall general fund. And that shortfall being exacerbated by the, by the subsidy to the public safety sales tax. That's just one on the long list of programs that council would have to consider. Uh, but, but you might choose to cut stormwater or you might choose to cut parks to pay for the SRO program and the larger public safety sales tax program. Those are decisions that the council will have to discuss at that time.
Thank you. And then Captain Hawkins, let's say we just press on and we want to see this fulfilled because we do start tracking the data and it is making a great impact. And for whatever reasons, we decide to do that. But then again, it becomes unsustainable. How, how bad is it for the long-term health of the program if we have to walk it back and reduce our SROs, which I don't know if you would know the answer to that since there's fortunately no experience with that, but that is something I think we need to talk about.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can't answer that question. Um, uh, you know, pulling the, pulling the, uh, officers out of the schools. Um, uh, in my opinion, should be a last resort, uh, issue, uh, or, um, uh, option. Um, but as far as what happens with those officers at that point in time, yeah, I, I can't speak to that.
So if we got into a pinch, the answer would be to cut stuff, like we talked about basic budgeting, uh, or increase the revenue, which could be letting the, the public decide, let them speak to where their priorities are. Thank you. It is difficult and I definitely don't want to be the, the council from the, the seventies that has put every single council since then in a real bind in managing basic city services, which is our sole responsibility and is what makes local government so important because the services we provide impact people's everyday lives, be it your home floods every time it rains, or you have a mentor that is a police officer in your school that changes your life. So these are not easy decisions to be made for sure, but I appreciate the very thoughtful discussion and I will turn it over to anyone else. Ellen, do we have any further comments?
Yes, Councilmember Foreman and Councilmember Peacock both have comments.
Thank you.
Uh, my first question is to Anthony, how much did you say we brought in last year on the PSST?
The exact figure Mm-hmm. is $9,408,000 from the sales tax and $1,117,000 from the, um, use tax.
How much of that do you know, um, readily, um, how much of that is the SRO salaries?
Remembering that the SRO program is just one part of the public safety sales tax. But the school resource officer, um, salaries totaled, uh, last fiscal year, uh, including overtime, about $1.1 million.
Okay. So it's been inferred a lot. And so I'm just going to rip the band-aid off and say it. Um, I mean, we see this as a problem. It's not sustainable. We just can't keep doing this. Um, I think we have a big problem with trust and finances. Um, so supplementing from the general fund every year, I think anybody can tell you, you know, borrowing from your savings account is a bad plan or paying for things on credit. It's a plan operating right now. So I don't want to kick the can down the road and like, oh, 2025, 2026, we're really going to be in goal. Uh, I think we need to actually start talking about this now. I think we need to take it back to the public now. It's a very passionate issue. I know a lot of people want it. Um, they don't want to see the program suffer. And so I think we need to start having the discussions now to start putting this to a vote because this is just not sustainable for the city. And I know that people want this program. I think there's benefits to the program, doesn't necessarily feel good for some other people. And we've had really great discussions about that. And I think we can keep having those discussions. But Anthony, Catherine, Darryl, I don't know who it would be, but if we were to take this, I mean, what kind of like percentage increase? Like how much would we need to get just to break even?
Uh, so Anthony, the number that we had from the 1/8% for public transit, what does that generate annually?
About 2.5 million.
So we were, we were overspent by 1.5 and an eighth of a percent gets you about 2.5 million. Now, if that projects out, so you're somewhere between an eighth and a quarter percent would be, I would assume, uh, adequate, but we would definitely do some analysis on that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Peacock?
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Foreman just asked my question, but I do have another one. Um, it's for Mr. Milner. Am I correct uh in understanding that bond funds cannot be used for salary?
That is correct. Uh, bond funds cannot be used for salary. They're there to for infrastructure uh materials.
So there's no scenario in the future where this program could possibly be propped up with bond funds?
No, this could not be supplemented with use of uh school bond funds. And if did I understand Mr. Francisco to say it was 1,100,000 total?
No, that was just the salaries and overtime for the S R O program. Remember that the S R O program is only one part of the public safety sales tax expense.
Yeah, I was just dividing that in half. And so it looked like maybe we, as Norman Public Schools were spending actually more than half uh as far as our share, because that would be 550,000 in ours. We've been spending about 680,000. So I was, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Yeah, there has always been a, a lively debate. Um, when we go to the public schools each year to budget for um what 50% will be. 50% of what? Is it 50% of just salary and overtime? Or is it 50% of the vehicle replacements and all of those other things that are involved in the program? So um, the decision has been salary-related expenses and 50% of that.
Well, I just want to go ahead and uh, yeah, echo the budgetary concerns of all my colleagues. I think those are very legitimate and fair. And I think a prudent action would be to go back to the people. So I'll leave it with that.
Mr. Milner, is it my understanding that the Norman Public Schools will not be able to contribute more? And I know you can't make that decision right now, but hopefully you've had the discussion. If we accept this grant, well, can we count on you to increase, you know, half of your half? And I ask that knowing that enrollment has got to be down with all of the online education that people are moving to for the reasons of a pandemic and we don't know if they're going to come back. And I know that our funding is based on per pupil, so I understand the concerns, but I mean, have you guys talked about that?
Yes, and and unfortunately, Dr. Millerino couldn't be here due to conflict with another meeting, but um, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we weren't really part of the original conversation in February about. So those kinds of budget decisions had to be made early on. Obviously, that was pre-COVID, so to be able to be in the midst of a budget and be able to commit another an additional amount above what we're already committed to, which I think is, sounds like from the numbers, we're above 50% already. Um, would be somewhat impossible to do that with, as you mentioned, uh, the enrollment going down, uh, COVID expenses going up and and the like. So that's now past that. You know, who's, who's to be able to know and foretell the future, but uh in the midst of a budget, coming up with that amount would be difficult.
Understood. City Manager Pyle, if we wanted to throw an election out there just to see what's going on, we know we have the road maintenance bond. We know we have water rate increase. This would be, and they're all different, so we got that going for us. This would be a sales tax increase. But just to let them decide, we would obviously have to make a decision about this grant before that time. But that seems like the obvious answer. What, what is a timeline that we could put something together and and let the public speak?
Um, and I'll ask uh, uh, the city attorney to help me on my timing. Uh, so you have a couple of other questions that will be considered in the not too distant future, including uh recommendations from your charter review committee. And um, if uh, and and city attorney is much better versed in terms of what types of questions can appear on the same ballot. So they don't all have to be on separate uh ballots. We could include several questions on the same one. So uh, Ms. Walker, if you can clarify what types of questions we can have on the same ballot, that may, that may really shorten the timeline.
Yeah, generally, there's not a limitation with, with the exception of a recall under our charter. Anything else can be set on the same election. Um, we generally have to give 60 days notice to the election board. Um, and so if, if you're adopting something right ordinance, which our sales tax ordinance would be uh for P S S T, you've got to back that up to the first and second reading and then preferably 30 days uh prior to uh the 60-day notice.
So Mr. Stevie, if we wanted to put this in April and it fails, can we say, hey, about that grant, I, I appreciate that you finally pulled our, our number and we were able to move forward, but we just can't afford it. I mean, is there a way to, to back out of it at that point?
Uh, yes, as long as we did not draw down any of those grant proceeds. Um, you know, harm no foul at that point, we would back out as long as we don't draw down the proceeds, there would not be a penalty.
We would probably include those four in the academy that would start in April. So they would be in there. We just wouldn't be placing people into the S R O program and uh, we would have over hires uh for, which would be nice for the patrol.
Yeah, since we have vacancies currently and we'll just, if the academy started in April, uh, five months, six months uh to get to the end, and then we'd figure out how many vacancies we had by the time graduation day arrived.
That would seem the easiest way to address this issue in turn, for the long term as well. Um, I do have concerns that we did have projects on a recent ballot that would have supported public safety that also failed. So that's concerning, but I, I think Councilman Reforman said it correctly. The, the, the people want this program and that's fine. I'm but we have to pay for it as well. Something has to give. So if that is the, the most logical answer to get us in a better financial footing now, then I'm, I'm very comfortable moving forward with that. And for everyone watching, uh, I welcome your input. I'm sure we all do on, on that next step. I, we've talked about ways to improve the program and to get better data for the program. And so I don't think right now we're discussing, do we like the program or not? We're talking about how do we pay for it? So I would be again, interested in, in feedback on that. Uh, it sounds like we could do it. I would go ahead and make it a quarter percent. So we're thinking a little bit more long-term and not consistently coming back to vote on this. Um, but I again, welcome feedback on that to see how we are uh good fiscal managers for the city of Norman and again, to get us in the best position possible to, to pay for the things that our residents want. Any other comments from council for tonight? Questions?
Councilmember Bearman?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna add to uh the mayor's comments that at the retreat coming up could be a great discussion topic to put fine points on all of those uh discussion items from this evening.
Which that reminds me, if you all haven't marked your calendars for October 16th, I told Brenda I would tell you to do that today. You've been put on notice once again. Councilor Beerman?
So um, City Manager Pyle actually kind of stole part of my point there as I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask um, City Attorney Walker if she believed that there was enough time to get details together so that we could kind of put some fine change on it um at the retreat or you know, just part of the time at the retreat to work on something like that.
For, I was digging around trying to find my calendar of election dates. Um, so for a January election, uh, first reading would be on October 27th. I believe you've already postponed something for consideration on that night, also for potentially a January election. Um, for February, it would have to be on first reading on November 24th. Uh, March, December 8th, April, January 12th. There, 2021 is a good year for elections. There's a lot of maybe every month you can have an election, which is not the case in even number of years. Uh, so there's 11 of the 12 months you can have one. So lots of options.
Ellen, I'm glad, I'm glad that we have lots of options because one of the things I do want to make sure we do is kind of find that balance between moving expeditiously if council decides to accept this grant contingent on a successful outcome of the vote. Uh, and also making sure that we can have a pretty comprehensive education campaign. Uh, because as Councilmember Holman reminded us, this did not have a sweeping majority mandate from Norman residents when it was made permanent in 2015. It only passed by 138 votes. Which is not at all dissimilar to how some of our recent propositions turned out in the reverse. So you know, this was not, you know, an overwhelming mandate from voters back then. I expect it likely won't be this time. And I want to do right by the information that N P D and Norman Public Schools has generated on this program over the last few years and make sure that we talk about this in a very comprehensive and non-politicized way. Um, which may be very difficult heading into the late fall. So I just, I really want to be sensitive to that and kind of balance those, those two competing needs. Um, while also recognizing that I really, really despise funding things with sales tax. Um, I mean, I know that it's kind of avoidable or not, it's unavoidable in Oklahoma, but you know, it, it it really concerns me, especially when um, we all know that we are not too far away from a regional transit authority that is also going to require a fairly substantive sales tax increase. So I just, you know, I feel like this is a very feasible path forward. But I feel like there are a lot of hidden potholes along the way that I really want to be sure that we're able to game out and not rush. So um, I like where the conversation is going though, and I just wanted to throw those things out there.
All right. That was a fantastic discussion. I think we've done a good job of looking not just to next year, but the next five years and making sure that we're able to pay our bills. So uh, hopefully, City Manager Pyle, uh, you've got some direction and another item for our agenda at the retreat. And I want to thank you. And I, I want to thank Captain Hawkins for a great presentation. That was very informative. I really appreciate that and I appreciate being open to our feedback. Uh, you can never have enough data. So I, I think that program does a lot of great things. And um, in the areas that may be not so great, the data will help us capture it all and also improve, as Councilwoman Patron was saying. Uh, Mr. Milner, thank you for being here. Uh, I'm sure you love the invitation to join council on Tuesday nights. Um, and Mr.
We're a hood. What are you talking about? We're the place to be on Tuesday nights. They should all be so lucky to sit in Mr. Milner's chair.
There you go. Uh, but Mr. Stevie, I'm sorry if I'm messing up your title, but congratulations on getting a grant. I mean, that's that's, that is something to be proud of. It's just unfortunate.
Who knew it would be this year? So.
Yeah, I gotta be here in the pandemic. It's about par for 2020 in Norman though, so uh, but uh, thank you all for your time. Uh, this was exactly, I think, the conversation that needed to happen. And if we continue to take the grant and our community continues to invest in this program, I would like to not only see the data, but reevaluate uh perhaps tweak the M O U that it gets looked at more than just automatically renewed. I think that would be something good for future councils as well. If there are no other questions or comments, we will wrap up tonight's study session. All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, Justin. I'll join you at a school board meeting coming up at your choosing. Trade ya.